All right, we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, April 11th. This is a, being conducted in a high-grids manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody is recording that, it's fine, you just need to let us know. Okay. We are recording it, it will be posted on the planning board website. Seven o'clock, Town Planners Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. All right, just a quick update on some of our ongoing business. I have been, submitted a series of warrant articles and reports to town board as we are approaching a town meeting. The aim, I don't, I won't speak for planning board members, but is at least to provide a template of where we sit tonight with regards to the short-term rental. The town councils, should they be interested in beginning to look at format and proofing and so on and so forth. I spoke with Jim Virchell yesterday, who owns property at 44 Charles Johnson Road. The, they have an easement at their property, and they're at the far northwest of the end. So there's a bit of a turnaround. I suppose visually speaking, from the sky down, it looks like the lowercase letter P in that that circle is very much a closed circle next to a stem of a street. And the thought that they wanted to examine was, is there an opportunity for them to establish a state lot out there? The reason why I mention the turnaround is that a portion of that discussion may involve, okay, well, improving a portion of the right-of-way to subdivision standards in order to create more frontage. So essentially, I would be defending subdivision planning improvement, even that small area. And we often appreciate that that circular portion of the letter P needs to be swept out for better movement of large vehicles. So that's just the ongoing coordination and resource project I have with them. I did receive a call from Westwood Savings Bank, agent regarding the posted security that the planning board holds for stormwater improvements at 20 Depot Square LLC, excuse the name of the firm, but this is a people, or People Square, pardon me. Anyways, the condominium development, excuse me, that's, that lies adjacent into the rear of the public housing area. So that was more of on their part, following up to see what are those remaining items. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we are looking for justification, no, quantification of the work that's been done, the work that the engineer can sign off on, because they decided to do according to plans and what were meant. But look at that dollar value come through us, or the dollar value, I mean, you could speak to us more intelligently about reducing some portion of that security. I spoke with Craig Sheeran last week regarding the cannabis regulations we have up here in Southwood, specifically the relationship of medical to the current production and processing opportunities, and then looking at the future for potential retail sales. So I know that at the current time, it's not allowed in town, discussions can go one way or the other, but nothing will be open for an application until a town meeting passes a bylaw to promote that use. Let's see. Today, I met with representative from Agriplus Energy regarding 22 Nicholson Hill Road and some adjacent properties. So this is a vacant estate lot, on the Duzon Nicholson Hill Road, it's a portion of the Waterman Farm, it lies adjacent to it. The relative barn near Nicholson Hill Road on College Highway is one of the parcels that they're including. That's being sold as a pair, we either, they put an offer in, they're trying to see what their next opportunities are. As it's important to the planning board, there were a couple of key things that jumped up to me about this proposition, we can pass this down to look at some of the diagrams. Needed to remind them that we do have that 150-foot setback requirement, and this is a fairly long and narrow piece of property with some weather constraints. So they looked at a couple of different options in terms of, well, what does a full 150-foot setback look like versus what would they bring forward with negotiated waiver? I'd like to know what would be important, you know, screening and protection to the fabric of the neighborhood is probably paramount, at least in my perspective. I'd like to know that anything that I spoke about, I couldn't make promises to the planning board, but want them to understand, you know, where they should be sensitive and knowledgeable. They did let us know that their company permits implements and operates in this smaller solar arrays. That's, you know, gross acreage between the two parcels I mentioned and potentially some additional acres, it's probably only sitting around 25 acres, and not all of that usable because of some setback requirements. So that's just the difference between their operation and some others, and why that small site might be feasible to them. Let's see. We are working through a request for information for records pertaining to the establishment of Vine Hill Road, which I have a code to report back to the planning board because in places I think we're going back hundreds of years. I do have a hazard mitigation plan update, public meeting announcement to share with the board. The Public Works Director shared this announcement with me. It is for next Wednesday, April 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. He didn't indicate that any kind of planning board member would be mandatory, I don't want to let everyone know that since I'll be out of town, the opportunities available to anyone who wishes to attend. So I'll just pass this down to the table, take a look at what that meeting might be about, go free to reach out to me. Let's see. Lastly, I wanted to circle back with the planning board related to Hudson Drive Solar March 7th, we had an informal discussion with Mr. Regan from EDP, who presented the equipment change that was discussed, going from fixed solar panels to those that will follow us on across the staff. At the last meeting, we had a lower resolution site plan that we were able to share, and this will open up. And we also talked briefly about the method of containment, one method of containment that they were just beginning to scratch the surface of and explore, and that was the fuel exhuming. In our permit decision, we say that, you know, anything that can leak, and certainly the battery energy storage area, they need to have containment, and that storage area also needs to be on a concrete, had to extend at least four feet beyond whatever structure was there. So how they choose to address that aspect, I want to take that containment discussion to put aside for the moment, and just let everyone know, as we do have Tom Saunders from EDP and a couple of folks from Navasun, which would be the operator coming in to implement that project. So I wanted to just draw the distinction between the planning board's inclination to accept that minor plan change for the interior components versus that separate discussion that we scratched the surface of regarding containment. And for anyone who is online, I will just share my screen right quick so you can see that new layout. Whoops, it never fails. So this gives, I think, is a little bit better visual, although consistent with what we saw at the last meeting, of how there's some root configuration of the equipment, as well as the panels within the footprint, or the permitted footprint of the project, but those are the only changes proposed at this time. Any questions from boards on this regarding that? No. Okay. So I'm sure as this project moves forward, we'll be seeing submittals because the building department is involved in any structures that go onto the property. So it'll be run past my desk, and we can, if there are further changes, then the implementation team will likely be bringing those forward to have further discussions about methods of containment, making sure they comply with the permit and provide the act for the necessary That's all I have for my report.
7:05, public comment, does anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Orissa.
Good evening, I'm Super Goberdon, 126 Delmas Street. Here tonight, because I didn't want to cold email or cold call the board about just first presenting this idea, I've been working on Chapter 61 Protocol, Chapter 61 pertaining to all parts of the Chapter 61, 61A and 61B, and the reason, just really briefly behind this protocol is so that we, as a town hall, can adhere to match general law a little bit more easily. In the last few years since I've been on conservation and then on agriculture, in terms of getting news about property that is coming out of any of those chapters, there've just been logistically and bureaucratically different timelines that have sometimes resulted in projects that would have funding falling through our fingers in terms of just the 120-day window that the town has to act on the right of first refusal. So I have a protocol that I'd like to present to all the relevant boards, and going around to all the commissions and boards that, as general law says, should be considered in the decision-making so that at the end, hopefully getting everyone's endorsement, who is privy to this information when the property does come out of 61, and has some sort of sway or at least decision-making overhead on it. The idea is to get everyone's endorsement so that everyone understands the product protocol and the process, but then as well, getting that codified by the select board. So the steps would be speaking to each individual board, getting feedback from you all, and then going eventually to the select board to get their approval, and eventually letting the Attorney General know, just because there have been a few instances where there've just been different interpretations, and it's a pretty straightforward thing, it's easy to follow. So if that sounds all right to this board, I would like to be able to send via email documents your way so that you can review it. I've been asking each board what the communication flow is for your board, some boards prefer to have email, you know, documents emailed so that they can review them before the next meeting, sometimes boards prefer to have the document printed out and then deliberated at the meeting, so is there a preference here in terms of what's, you know, going to be easiest?
Well. Let it direct.
Back to you, John.
Do we get to debate this at all?
I would just email it to John, and then he can circulate it to the board.
Right, great, and we can just go from there.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
And there's also, I mean, say to John, there's also the address on the webpage too, you could submit it to that too, I don't know if you have John's or that, but either one.
Yeah, okay.
We'll see, and pass it along.
Absolutely.
Sure, I'll send over the draft then, and then we can communicate subsequent to that in terms of a date, a future planning board date that I can come to and just get some feedback and see if you guys would be willing to endorse it, and you can just go from there, but I will do that then.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much for the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment for tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to 7:06, 159 Berkshire Avenue, Stormwater Management Permit So, let's see, yes, Derek's on there. Derek, why don't you start, give us the update on where we stand, and then I'll turn to John, he can give us the update from the town side, and then we can go from there.
Very good. So yeah, maybe 17 pieces to this puzzle, we're currently reviewing, and maybe on the 10th, between the 10th and the 15th piece on the BMPs, the structural details, materials that will be installed, the installation requirements, inspection schedule, and construction schedule. So I think some of that's under review at this point, and that's where, maybe John, if you maybe would take.
Sure, happy to do so, Derek.
Thank you.
So Derek, in, in general alignment with discussions at the last meeting, submitted materials last week to Randy and I for our review, and grateful to have that in hand. It is, we received materials related to both construction details, as well as plan information, sequence, timeframes, it is an abundance of data. So owing to, after all my part-time schedule and Randy not being in the office one day last week, we have scheduled our review for tomorrow afternoon to go through and see if there are any remaining comments or coordination items that need to be buttoned up on the application.
Anything from the board? Okay. Hopefully the finish line is insight. You have the agenda for.
I think our inclination was to not have this as early in the meeting.
Yeah. Well, first, let me just, any town officials have any questions or comments? Okay, any public questions or comments?
There's something on the chat, I don't know if it can see them.
There's more in the chat. There was, did I, it's, I believe it's only, I'm working on it, working on it.
Marcus, you want us to see what's in the chat? Can you see what's in the chat on that computer right there?
Carl's new, Bob Stevens.
What's in the chat?
Oh, the chat.
Yeah.
Chat, chat, oh, there's two chats, sorry.
Okay, just information from Tom early on. We can work that out.
Good job.
Are you a public official, or?
No, I think I did public.
Okay.
Comments, I didn't see any, so.
Do I hear a motion to continue 159 Berkshire Avenue at 7:45 on April 25th?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard Utzinger, second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave, it's the aye.
Okay, 7:45, Derek.
Thank you.
Whatever day, whatever day I said.
April 25th. Of April.
Okay.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you all.
Let me see, Marcus, just let me see if I'm here before. That's it.
7:20, proposed short-term rental bylaw, continued public hearing. Let's go through, well, first, let me read into the record. How do I read caps? I don't know how to read, do I yell it?
Yes, caps mean very loud speech.
Like we're telling the, claim up the fort.
Very loud speech.
Ooh, the daddy voice? Uh-oh.
All right.
I've never heard this.
Let me read into the record. We did request input from the building inspector, since they are the zoning enforcement officer as well, and we have gotten it. Letter dated April 6th from Kyle Scott. Dear John and Planning Board Members, the first section of this proposed bylaw under purpose states that the intention of this proposed document is to prevent negative impacts on neighborhood character, housing availability, housing prices, and availability of long-term rental units, as well as impacts on infrastructure services. Does anyone logically think that when they read this section, that these items listed on the document for short-term rentals will not have a large impact on any of these items listed here? The fact is that short-term rentals are very profitable to the property owners. This alone will cause buyers to purchase properties only with the goal of having short-term rentals. This can cause prices to spike, squeezing new buyers out of the market, as well as drain the town stock of persons needing long-term housing. The detail in this section is beyond reasonable for code enforcement and use of judgment on behalf of the building inspector when so many areas are left to interpretation. One example would be snow removal. How and also why would the building department monitor this if not completed for someone's satisfaction? Under definitions, I have found this section problematic as well. One thing that's very concerning is operators' agents. I have experience with this matter where short-term rentals are placed in the hands of various companies, the service and the owners of the properties are not even in the area. My feeling is the short-term rentals, if allowed to proceed, should only happen in cases of owner-occupied one- and two-family homes. They should not in any case be allowed in multi-unit buildings. Short-term rental in larger apartment complexes is highly likely to disturb other, perhaps long-term residences, and not allow for the peaceful enjoyment of that property or surrounding units. Other items that are problematic are that these permits are to be issued in 15 days at states. Building permits have 30 days for a timeframe, as you are involved in other departments, health and fire, that is beyond the control of the building department. Time of the month requested for issuance is at this department's busiest time and not a good selection to start the process. Persons that have units rented but not registered will continue, as many people today have no regard for rules or laws, who is responsible for policing these units? Surely no one expects a one-person building inspection department in a town with a lot of development to regularly monitor the internet for illegal short-term rentals. One section lists in a butters list to be furnished by the applicant. Who compiles this? The town clerk is already short-staffed. Do butters have a say in this process to deny the application? This document has many issues that need clarification. Is there an age limit on renters? Who monitors trash pickup if not attended to? If a unit has too many occupants, as I have seen many times in other towns, and subject systems are overloaded, or materials flushed that are not allowed to be disposed of in this fashion, who is then involved? And how do you take action on a short-term renter that is not from this area? The violation process in this town is deeply flawed and unreliable for enforcement purposes. This document is really not ready for town meeting, in my opinion, it's flawed in numerous places. I am strongly against any short-term rental bylaw being accepted in Southwood. I have experience with other towns and multiple inspectors where these rentals are nothing beneficial to the town in actual harmful. Certainly Kyle Scott.
Okay. Well, I guess we're going over. Maybe I'm wrong. And maybe we should clarify this, since he's the zoning enforcement officer, but I don't believe the purpose section of any bylaw is ever enforced in any way, shape, or form. It is simply a purpose section, it doesn't generate any enforceable obligations. It is used as a, it's a reference when you're interpreting other sections of the bylaw, in my mind. So, but I also would say that I'm pretty sure there's a bylaw in town that requires snow removal on sidewalks and whatever else, doesn't it? I mean, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that exists right now, so.
On a paved sidewalk.
Correct. Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, so, but I mean, that's not part of what being enforced in this in any way, shape, or form is by law. I do think it's worth every discussion about the multi-unit buildings, I mean, that's a point to discuss that he brings up, that that is, it's not, it's, let's see. Family apartments and accessory affordable apartments are, are not included, I don't remember how those are defined, but multi-unit or multi-use, multi-unit, I'm just trying to find where it was, are included as being, what's in the definition? Multi-unit residential buildings are included. Now, there's not a hell of a lot of those in Southwood to begin with, but to the extent Any comments on that section of it?
I think he makes a reasonable point there as to multi-unit buildings that have a short-term rental in there could be disturbing to the longer-term renters, I guess you'd say. Where were you looking at the ones that are excluded, Mike?
Section, 10?
10, okay. Oh, ineligible units, yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to think of, take out income restricted, you take out family apartments or accessory affordable apartments, which I gotta look and see what those are defined as. I just, I'm not sure how many multi-unit dwellings exist in Southwood, but.
Well, across from Tucker's, they're follower apartments, I guess it is.
Followers.
What's it called?
Captain.
Captain, Captain's follower.
Punched down by the lake.
So we would.
That's why I don't know, I don't know what.
This bylaw would allow a, someone in, to have a short-term rental.
Four, maybe five different developments. Maybe you want to count the senior ones, you can count those as well.
So we could modify B to say apartments, take out family apartments, to say apartments.
Or just take out the multi, just do it one, single-family residential buildings, right? I mean, or dwellings, I mean, that's how you change it, I think, it's just, it's not the definition.
The only thing that's left out, which of all, is the single-family home, that's it.
Right.
That's, I mean, we're talking about everything we're eliminating, as opposed to the only thing we're still allowing is a single family.
Yeah, I mean.
Stand alone.
Yes, so, I mean, there are more here. I mean, I guess the answer would be, what do you consider the, like, Depot Square, right? Those would be duplexes, so those would probably technically be multi-unit buildings.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a condo ownership, so if you, if you lived in a condo, I don't know if you'd want.
You may very well have.
The one, the one next to it to be short-term rental and have somebody in there.
Under H.O.A., no subletting.
That would be for them to determine, huh?
You mean within their homeowner bylaws?
Correct. All right, well, let's just, let's go through this, so we can kind of have the talk.
Well, I think we should kind of settle this approach, though, are we going to change B, or?
So what is the, what is the, do you want to have multi-family, or do you not want to have multi-family, or apartments, I should say, or multi-unit, or apartments, or condos, I suppose, all of those.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, there's Mr. Utzinger, who was on that committee.
My suggestion is, you hand this up to a duplex-type unit, and nothing less.
My suggestion is you hand this up to a duplex type unit and nothing larger than that. I can't imagine renting an apartment complex where it's come and go. That's not the people in the apartment complex are, are looking for. They're looking for a place to raise a family. I think maybe a duplex operation should be about the largest size of housing that we should use.
At least why make an exception for a duplex? Assuming the concern is to not have a short-term rental that's separated only by a wall, that you don't want a neighbor is gonna be.
Because then you're more likely looking at potentially an owner occupied and or this, this is my first floor rental and you are a long-term renter, just so you know, the second term is short-term rental. That might be more palatable than perhaps this is an apartment complex. We all understand we're renters here except for this one unit at the end that gets. But again, I mean, if.
I think you said a permit type. I think.
Not have short-term rentals separated by a wall, then.
And I, and I think the other, I mean, I think the building inspector raises a good point about the purpose in the intro there about affecting the availability of renting rentals. You know, housing availability, house prices, availability of long-term rental units.
It would probably be more along the lake area to scoop them up just to rent them out.
But no, they're not doing it now.
We don't have, we don't have a bylaw that allows it.
But we don't have a zoning enforcement officer who is enforcing the lack of a bylaw in any way, shape or form.
Probably more that we just, we just don't know.
No, I don't think that's true. I, I got this, I mean, I, you, I don't know. I mean, I got the sense that the subcommittee looked at it pretty detailed as to what is being rented out and it came up with, I thought it was five, but I could be wrong. It's not a, it's not a large number by any stretch of your imagination.
There's a couple of them more.
Correct. I don't know. I mean, I don't have a problem with. I mean, I guess you've changed dwelling unit definitions. You take out apartments. You take out condominiums. Well, yes, I think you take that out. You'd have cottages, guest house, and then you put one or two family residential buildings slash dwellings, right? I think that's.
How about not to exceed?
Or residential buildings, dwellings not to exceed two units?
Correct.
That's fine.
Do you want to run live with this? You want to make a working copy? In search of consistency.
Yeah, no, we should probably do it. We gotta get it done tonight, right? Send that to us.
It'd be good.
Gotta get it done before May, what?
May 9th. No, 16th. I mean, it's May 16th? That's the, I mean, town meeting.
All right, so. Any building or area in a building used or intended for use for human habitation, including but not limited to and if it's a cottages, guest house, or residential building slash dwellings not to exceed two units. Is that right? Is that how it would? Is everybody okay with that or is everybody?
Okay with the general language, I guess. And I get your point about it more being more likely to be owner occupied than it's a duplex.
Agreed.
So if we're banking on that being a thing that's, that a duplex is okay. I guess I'm still trying to struggle, Mike. Is the intent that we're trying to make sure that there's not a short-term rental a wall away from somebody who's living there permanently? Or are we trying to make sure there's not a big building with five people and there's short-term rentals coming in and out all the time?
Well, I mean, it just, it strikes me. Maybe I'm wrong, but it strikes me that for a lot of these places that are multi-unit is probably gonna be private regulations that control what you kind of cannot do. Right? I mean, they're probably, they may very well have a homeowners or condo association or something to control. They're gonna have some ability at least, whether they do it or not, they're gonna have the ability to, because there's gonna be some legal structure where you can have control over that. And it can be done privately if you don't want, then rent it out.
I guess there's no way to require the owner of a duplex to inform a potential long-term renter that the adjacent the adjacent places or apartment is short-term rental.
And if they're to do more of the condo situation where you got, and maybe that's covered by the HOA.
Yeah, I would think condominiums are gonna have an HOA.
We got, we got a bunch of places in town there that are condos and they're rentals of all rentals. They could do a short-term inside there. It's all corporate, they're corporate, they're not, no associations, no, none of those.
Correct. I mean, it's.
Sure, you know, the place over, over behind Griss Mill. And then there's especially the one over there on the other side of the lake by Shelton's. That's all, somebody owns that.
But that's, those aren't, those aren't duplexes.
But they're.
So you wouldn't fit under those.
No, they wouldn't fit under it because we're taking out apartments.
You're gonna, you're gonna take out apartments?
Yeah. Well, I don't, I'm trying to think if there's.
We're allowing it to be.
Two-unit places over at the lakes. I mean, there could be, I suppose. I don't know well enough.
There's someone on the road. There's someone by the lakes, going up to the lakes, past the church.
So, I mean, I, you know, I'm not. I don't know. I'm not, to me, that's not a huge issue. I think it gets dealt with by the, by the owner of the property to figure out. I mean, because they're obviously, if they're, if they're either, it's either owner occupied, right? And so the owner is gonna wanna control what goes on next door. Or if they're renting out both of them. Then unless they just don't care about the rental income from this one, they're gonna control what's going on in this one, I presume. So, I mean, it strikes me that there's some degree, or they have, like in Depot Square, they're gonna have an HOA format that will cover that. And most of those have rental. Yeah. Or some percentage is what you can have. So.
So we're gonna, you're gonna deal with it by changing the definition of the dwelling unit.
Correct.
And we won't touch 10B.
I don't think you need to. I mean, I, it's somewhat deprecatory to even have 10B, but I think you're safe in.
Just as a note, we're in section three. The, would you like to read the sentence or modify that?
What is that? Section two definition?
Section three, short-term rental.
Oh, yeah, just take that same thing and put it into.
How about?
I would just literally take.
Cut. Yep, gotcha.
Well, you know what? I mean, that should really say it should only be allowed in dwelling units, right?
Yes.
I'm actually using the definition. Okay. I'm gonna move on while you're doing that. Then we'll come back and read through it just one last time before we forget what to do. The next thing that I saw, and you guys have the letter, right?
Yep.
So jump. Jump in and say something if you want, but the next thing I saw was the 15 days versus 30 days.
Yep.
I don't really, that makes sense to me generally. That's how they're sort of structuring things. Let's put it at 30 and.
Well, that's why we, we acquired a pin. Because we were wondering if it was too short a period of time to turn around something.
That's all set.
And we call that calendar days, 30 calendar days. We had a discussion about business days.
Oh, yeah. I thought we went with business days.
No, but then it's. Well, I would do it whatever, you know, the building, the 30 days is kind of calendar.
What did the restaurant want to go on? They want calendar or is it different 30 days?
That's what he said. He didn't say.
Usually when you use 30, it's calendar days.
Should I just say 30 days?
Yeah, that's fine. Say 30 days.
Good.
Deal with it.
Oh, I don't know. We needed to nail that down.
Well, that was very whiny. I wanna go home and play.
The answer, if it doesn't say business days, it's calendar days, is the way.
Commonly accepted format.
Correct.
Okay.
Time of the month that he wants this to start at is, again, I don't care. It's, it's sort of arbitrary when you do it.
Well, we started out originally with the fiscal year and then Mr. Brown suggested to fit in with all the other permitting processes to go with the calendar year.
But to be clear, the criticism here doesn't say the time of year. It says the time of the month. So what exactly is he requesting?
I think it's the I think he meant year.
I can confirm from discussions.
So he's saying there's a lot of other permits that he is involved with that come up on a calendar year basis.
So, I mean, maybe it makes sense to put it, I mean, since a lot of these may very well be summer rentals, right? Maybe it started at June post. That's probably the more, that's probably not the way to go, but. May 15? May 15. Or May 1st. Right here. Eastern, July.
July 25th.
August.
Oh, it's my birthday.
I think that's what we should, we should have asked Kyle.
When did they start renting in Dennis, Mass? We see you refer to Dennis. Or not Mr. Sun.
Today is international. Be kind to your lawyer then, just so you know.
No.
A hundred percent. So you know.
No jokes. Well, when would, when would rentals?
So would July 25th or not?
I would say if you're, if January 1st is not appropriate, how about April 1st? You do the last quarter and then.
Funny.
Yeah. And then that way, if you are talking about a short-term rental that is reliant on summer income, they have a good month prior to Memorial Day weekend to really lock down their permit and fix any issues that maybe are.
We're gonna make somebody unhappy somewhere no matter what.
Yeah, oh, definitely. But we wanna keep our zoning enforcement officer somewhat happy, right? Oh, go with that. April 1st.
All right.
That's not a bad thing to, you know.
It's a March 31st. All right, next thing I saw, last paragraph on the first page.
How about the first paragraph on the second page? The butters list. Oh, oh, we didn't get the side.
I'll see if I can. What do we make it, March, what, 30 days?
Oh, this would have added 45 days before, so it would've been. Is that right?
Sure. What was that?
What's calendar year?
April 1st, March 31st, the same year.
Okay.
Didn't you know in the time of our performance, it turned backwards today?
Did we get that one? Did we? It's a whole cal, it was, the idea was no matter when they get registered, they pay that fee even if it's two months before.
Yeah, we'll go back and read this again to make sure that we cover all those changes. All right. I, I just, the last paragraph, I mean. I, I'm not we're not deciding what bylaws to pass and not to pass based on people today having no regard for rules or laws. So. It also, I mean, the reality is if there's a staffing issue in the building department, then that's, that's an issue for the selectors to figure. I mean, I, you know, it doesn't, I like to get input on, on details and we can try to make it as more it's easier for them to do it. But if there's a staffing issue for enforcement purposes, that's another discussion to have. It doesn't mean you don't pass a bylaw necessarily just because there may be a staffing issue. I also don't think if there's five rentals, there is going to be a huge staffing issue, but that's just. And it's also not. I mean, you can list on both hands and feet how many other bylaws we have that this is dealt with, right? The docs. We're not expecting the building inspector to go and search the internet for, for illegal doc rentals. Not, we're not talking about you, just so you know.
Oh, man.
I was thinking about someone else in particular.
Trust me, not you.
Over the years. I forgot when you were here.
All right, Mike.
It, it honestly is about someone else. We've reported, it's in litigation right now. So. You know, it's not like we're expecting the building inspector to be searching the internet looking for illegal doc rentals. I mean, it's just, it gets reported through the course of things and then you're the.
It'll be a citizen report.
So, I mean, that's, I don't think it's different than any other bylaw like that. All right, Marcus, moving on to the butters list. There is, he's right about that where there is a discrepancy in here about what the hell you do with it above us.
Well, what, but his concern was who does it? Well, it's the assessor's office. That provides it.
But there's nothing in here that talks about what you do with it other than they have to provide it. So someone has to, it has to be specified.
Maybe we can ask Richard. Who, who came up with this idea of having a butters list? I mean, we're not expecting a butters to have inputted into the registration process, right?
Correct. I think that's picked up mostly from the building department because you know, there's no vacation. If you want to somebody, probably they need a 300-foot. You know, with, you know, the address of people within 300 feet. I don't have a problem with that at all. You know, but then again, I don't live down where most of these houses are gonna be rented either.
Well, the question is, what is the use of the butters list?
The purpose was to make to make people aware that a short-term rental registration has been issued for an abutting property. So that they are aware that to expect other people to be coming in and out. That if there is a problem and you go and you knock on the door and say, hey, quiet down, the building office is the place to go if you have an issue afterwards or whatever. It was to make the neighbors aware that.
So there's gonna be a notice given to those people within the 300-foot?
That was the intent and that was.
But it doesn't, you know, it's not called out here.
We, we took, people took it out, then we put it back in and then it was, you know. That's why we're fine to. It wasn't for the butters to be able to say, to deny as, as this question is there.
But it doesn't say use it to notify the butters.
Man, I'm not sure we need a butters list. I'm not sure we need to make them notify. I don't know.
Well, that was, when it came out of subcommittee, one of the balances here in order to protect the neighborhood and the residents who live and own property nearby one of these places that we are allowing to give them at least the knowledge that it's happening and that if issue arises, these are, you know, if you have an, if there is a fire, call the. these are, you know, if you have an, if there is a fire, call the fire department, if there's a police issue, this, this is the issue. If, if repeated problems, this is who you contact.
So there'd be a boilerplate letter.
This is FYI. This, uh, registration for a license for a short-term rental has been issued for this address. And I think we kinda said we were gonna leave it up to the building inspector to draft said letter because that's how they wanted.
So in that, if that's the way it is, then I'm thinking we need to cut that back to a hundred feet.
Well, you can't do that because if, if a short-term rental is in our forty where we have two hundred foot length in our parcel, somebody could live in near us property, could be less than a hundred.
But, but you got a good buffer there too in the rural, in the more sparsely populated, populated area.
My kids are waiting at the end of my driveway and there's a rental unit two houses down, I wanna know.
Well, I mean, I, that's fine, I don't even mind a three hundred. And, and, but I think it's, so it would be on the applicant though to provide notice to the butters list.
That's correct. And for hand to pay for it, everything.
To be provided by the, um.
However.
Yeah.
Well, the applicant's gonna pay for getting the butters.
However, we do it in the planning office for, for that purpose, if you want.
I don't know, but we do it at our own expense, we're not doing it at our own expense here.
And we don't notify all the butters.
Yes, we do.
How do we do that? We don't send them.
Yes, we do, we do, that's why we have it in our bucket.
We used to do that with their town.
Long goes far away. Oh, sure.
I thought we, we stopped doing that. Oh, we stopped doing the certified.
Right.
Okay.
So I think this needs to be changed, are you in that section?
Yeah, yeah, we need to.
I mean, you know, what I was gonna say, I mean, there's, you know, I think giving notice, especially if that was sort of discussed in the subcommittee, is sort of a, you know, give and take, makes sense, but, like, have some practical, I mean, this is not, you know, sex offenders living next door, we gotta like have some, we gotta draw the line somewhere where it's not as, you know, yes, you get them some notice and you give them an idea of where to go if there's an issue.
I can't, I can't deny it, I'm not showing up to a special permit hearing complaining about it to the planning board, I'm some boo being made a way.
So you, at least, so you know where to go if there's an issue.
Right.
That's, cause people wouldn't necessarily know that, that, I think it's a useful piece of information.
So we should say something about notification.
Correct, so it should say.
To that effect.
So registration application shall be made on a form approved by the zoning enforcement officer.
And include.
And shall.
Notification from a certified butters list.
I would say it shall include a certified butters list within three hundred feet of the property, to which, or to whom the applicant has, um, provided.
Notification?
Of the application.
I'm gonna verify that they've actually done that.
You're not.
I solemnly swear that I have done it.
We're gonna, we're gonna, no, I mean, that's what they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to sign and say, so that if someone comes in here and says, I, I didn't know. Then you at least have something on file that says you were supposed to do this. I mean, you gotta, I, I don't know what else you'd do.
The only other thing I could use on.
Certified, it'd be the only other way, you'd have to do green cards.
To do ourselves, and that becomes part of the application fee is to cover the effort to do that.
Oh, we take, we do the note, or the town does the note.
For sure that it actually occurs. So in the conservation world, there is a boilerplate affidavit, the agent signs saying they've done their fair part, so I think that'd be part of perhaps. There's, not that I wanna comment, and then, uh, rather than go the green card route, uh, the post office has an opportunity to stamp a certified butters, excuse me, certified, um, certified mailing list. So, print out a form online, you write out who you sent it to, they go through, they say, yep, these are, your, these are the mailings being sent to these parties, stamp it, and that can be provided.
All right, so why don't we just do the same, so here's, I'll read this in a minute.
Sure, yeah.
So, in the first sentence of B will read, registration application shall be made on a form approved by the zoning enforcement officer, and shall include a certified butters list within three hundred feet of the property, to whom the applicant has provided notice of the application, and a comma, and an affidavit of service on a form approved by the zoning enforcement officer, right, those two things. And we can figure out the affidavit and form and whatever else, so, does that make sense?
Mike.
You can read my chicken scratch, you're welcome to.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
In real life, these people aren't gonna do this every day, they're only gonna do it once a year, once every couple of years, you know, they're not moving in, in the house, in and out. They're renters, they're gonna provide the list and then rent to different people, it's not like they're moving back and forth themselves. It's gonna be like a permanent list for, let's say, maybe one year, two years, three years, whatever, however long they own a house.
Say that again, you only have one-year terms.
Right, but do they need to establish butters list every single year?
I mean, if you have to sit and apply for it, I, again, it's not, I can't imagine it's a huge expense to add to it, uh, to just send out a few letters that say, you know, this is gonna be a short-term rental, if you have, if there's any issues, you can certainly see the zoning enforcement officer, you know, whatever, whatever we come up with the stuff.
Okay.
Again, it, it's, and part of this too is, I'm not necessarily expecting this to be perfect, we're putting in a bylaw for the first time, and, and probably gonna have some changes over the next, you know, handful of years where we say this isn't working perfectly, and we'll change it this way. So I think there's a little bit of room for not being perfect on this. Okay. Next. Paragraph. Age limit on renters. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure that that's.
Surprised there isn't something in here. I was looking through definitions, but I can't.
I just, I'm not sure in this town it's necessary, right, I mean, I, I think there's probably areas where that is necessary, you may wanna control, you know, not having college kids or whatever else.
I thought there was already. As, as far as renting an apartment, um, hotels, those all have age limits, since it's already a place. Really, you gotta be twen- twenty or eighteen, maybe you'd be eighteen to rent a, to rent a hotel?
You'd probably need to be eighteen to rent a hotel, or you have to have just a credit card that they can bill. Really, it's, it's not a rental car.
Hotel you're going to, I suppose.
Well, the hotel, hotels.
No, no.
The regular hotels, they have a, there's a.
I would, I would offer that if it is a vacation-type destination home that would be offered up on, say, Verbo or Airbnb, Airbnb, those companies may have an age limit on who they're willing to contract with a rental agreement, so that's on them, right, just like a rental car company has their own limits on what you can do. If it is a private homeowner renting out short-term rentals, I just met somebody who's up here from Tennessee working on the pipeline, and is currently doing a camper, because that's all that's available in town, is to have a rental camper there. So if you're a twenty-year-old welder coming up from Tennessee to work on a pipeline, you want, do we want our bylaw to say, no, sorry, you can't access the one of five rentals in town available to you, cause you're not yet twenty-one, I don't think that's our job as, what's the address here?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, a huge, I just, I'm not sure this is the place where that's an issue. Monitor's trash pickup if not attended to, again, these are, these are basic fundamental bylaws.
Word of health.
For stuff.
Word of health.
Goes to the, you know, whether it's zoning, whether it's health, whether it's.
Calls you six times, cause every single week the renter comes and no trash gets removed, then, then you have a violation of.
But it also very well may be a health department issue, a bylaw, as you have to, you have to deal with them too. So they, there may be joint jurisdiction over certain issues and, you know, I mean, cause there is, you have to.
But we're surely not suggesting that the building enforcement officer go out and check people's trash, are we?
Correct.
Right.
There is an obligation to, for the owner to be responsible for ensuring that household trash is removed. So, you know, the zoning enforcement officer, if they chose to do so, could enforce it, or it could be a health department issue that they enforce, if it's, depending on what it is. Septic, I mean, again, these are. In my mind, I, I can't imagine there's gonna be a whole huge change between what's going on right now and what's going on if this passes a town meeting. I can't, there's not gonna be twenty-seven rentals that come in during that timeframe, so I, I just, I don't, I don't know. Okay, and then lastly, not so much for this bylaw, but if the violation process in this town is deeply flawed and unreliable for enforcement purposes, maybe we should take that up and deal with that. I don't know, I don't know enough about it, I know, I don't know what the issues have been, but I'm happy to listen to it and take up whatever, except we have control over any of it. But I don't know what the issues are, so I can't really, can't really do anything about it until we know what the issues are, so. I, I don't, yeah, that's, I, I don't have a problem dealing with it. Doesn't mean you don't pass a bylaw. All right, the red line, is everybody okay with the red line, other than, you know, obviously we've made some changes, um, but. Is everybody okay with the red line? I think they're all additions, right?
Well, the definition, we scratched out some things.
Yeah, I mean, it has changed, it has changed.
It's useful.
All right, um. Why don't we just take a few minutes just to run through, why don't you just read through it?
Well, we had a holdover on the appeals. You were going to think about.
I was gonna think about that.
About the appeals, uh, Mr. Mowgli supported, uh, the way it was written as far as using the Board of Appeals.
Yeah. I.
You know, if it has use, I mean, we could leave it in and let the town council, I'm sure, will have some, you know, insight into how that kinda thing works, or, I mean, anyone can skip this appeal part under fifteen and go right to court, right? File a lawsuit and jump, jump over, whatever.
Yeah, it's fine, I don't care, just leave it in there with the town council. Keep their opinion on that. All right, um, I mean, I just say take a quick run through and make sure we're not missing any, especially with the changes we just made, that we're not missing any.
Did we work the thing out on the calendar, when, when the renewal?
Yes.
When we put the renewal in, or whatever it is?
Yeah, we'll go.
April first, and then, so we needed so many days before that to submit applications for renewals, I guess, however we add that, written. Yeah, that was, uh, three E, registration renewal.
I was getting the best part for myself.
So we took out, so we just put in a date there, John, in E. Set it over in November fifteenth.
February fifteenth.
February fifteenth, and then we took out calendar, right, of each year?
Up above. In D, Marcus, is that what you're asking?
No, E.
Yeah, the time, I think the discussion about March thirty-first of the, in this case, we, we not worried following year, or the date of our calendar year there.
Yeah.
The one in E, I think it's okay as it sits, but.
So.
Take a look at it on the computer.
D reads. It shall be created on April first and shall end March thirty-first of the following year.
Of the application.
A certificate. God, yes, I win. Complete application registration renewal shall be submitted and received by February fifteenth of each.
When they come to get the application, you can hand them the notice, they can just make copies of.
Calendar year, along with.
All right, everybody okay with this? I don't see any other areas where something got changed and it requires a later change.
Sound a little bad.
Everybody good?
Sure.
Any town officials have any comments? I'm fine with that, any, uh, public comments, questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the year?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard Ottinger, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
All right, um, do I hear a motion to um, recommend the bylaw with the changes we just made, um, to town meeting?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Richard Ottinger, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Okay. All set with that.
Good job to you and your dick team.
Yep, thank you, Richard.
Yep.
Lot of work.
Listen to you, I'll be up there in two weeks, you can thank me then.
Yeah, we gotta find a new subcommittee for you, Dick.
You're already going to cheer you for two.
You shepherd that.
I hear Paula calling me.
All right. Discussion, proposed minor plan amendment for the parking configuration at one forty-one Congamon Road. Mr. Eggleston.
No, we're not moving the lake.
May I approach? Sure.
Come on up.
Can Eggleston one forty-one Congamon Road?
He can't move the leg by the two feet.
He wants us to push the lake back two feet.
I wanna move Congamon Road by two feet.
Not the lake. Uh, do you have anything? I have the third one, but then, you know, I sent down, and the roll one out would be great. What you have is, can I, what's the letter on the bottom right? H, okay, I have the H as well. Um, however, you should have also had the, the revision. This is what we're looking, the area we're talking about changing this year. And I apologize for coming here again, but this, the situation. You can look at that little one, the circled area is what I'm talking about. When it was originally approved, there was a require, there was a requirement. When it was originally approved, there was a require, there was a requirement of a twenty-two foot setback from the parking area. Where am I? Right here, okay. The parking area, looking at that drawing there, and I don't have a pen. Thank you, I do have a pen. The original plan over there had these parking spots coming all the way out to here. They were twenty feet long. Those were originally twenty feet long and ten feet wide. And in, in the midst of construction around the property, whatever, for some reason, this area's been continuously avoided, um, by, by Crestview, who was hired to do the work. And now, of course, we're finding out why. Because we couldn't figure out how we're gonna cut away the bottom of this, this area here. Previously, it was much bigger, it's four feet more going back to like here. It used to go like this. This is a doorway with a handicap access that's on, that's on a ramp. And we're talking about cutting through that ramp like this, which was going to impede the handicap. So what, what we're asking is, um, we're allowed thirty percent smaller parking spaces within the sixty that we have. We were only using sixteen. Fourteen, fourteen. That are over in the middle of the parking lot, this, this big little.
Out of how many?
Out of sixty.
Is that what, the number we finished on, sixty?
Yes.
Okay, so fourteen out of sixty?
Fourteen out of sixty.
Right, so we're looking for thirty percent of sixty, no, sixty-two, is it? Sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
That's a bigger number.
So we, we have, we have four more available to us. And so if we can reduce this, 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 and this, these four, down to sixteen feet instead of twenty feet, that then allows us four feet in this direction to get a twenty-two foot backing up thing. It doesn't say it here, but I'm also proposing that we add a sign somewhere. And it, it can't be within the town's, the state property. But, you know, maybe something over in this area here, small cars only or something that should only be coming into here.
Can't write compact cars right on the, on the.
On the ground.
On the, the asphalt?
Um, there is asphalt there, we probably could.
Just write compact cars only.
I think that's easy to do, when I have it lined, I can, I can certainly have that.
So it'd be these four.
I've seen my giant, big giant truck, did that for me one day. It's, oh, there's an open one, thought I'd turn in, I looked down, we compact cars, went, damn.
You're not gonna fit in there, David.
I definitely don't qualify for that.
You may, they may get in, but they're not gonna get out. So that's, that's the revision where we would then move, move this area here, and that would require, there's one, I don't know if anybody has a picture, did you ever take a picture of the area?
I don't have a.
That's where you used to go into that small restaurant there.
Breakfast area.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to see a picture of the area we're talking. This, this post is still gonna have to be eliminated. Low battery. Which is one, one post there. Previously, we would have had to have cut into it, I have to look at it again, I'm sorry.
Those posts.
This wall right here, previously, we literally were taking off half of that wall and coming all the way across, taking away two poles and affecting the, the ramp area into the handicap. This is, this was a handicap ramp, there's a pole here now, and there's a pole about here now. No, there's a pole here and a pole here. And that, and you see where the wall is over here, the old one. It was going much further back, this is H. I was looking for G.
So he's, what, what do you have?
Yeah, this was, this is how it used.
Eighteen?
Oh, good. Coming way back.
Eighteen point six.
See how six it is there versus. It's, it's the opposite, but there's, it's four more feet. Be moving four feet that way. Which is the four feet that we're hoping to gain.
We're the only town that has ten by twenty parking spaces.
We're looking to not cut off as much of this area right here, as was originally proposed, and still, and now reducing and reducing the size of these parking spaces. So still, still giving you the twenty-two feet. In addition to that, talking about changes on the plan, the propane tank has changed its orientation. Propane tank original had the propane tank going parallel to the trash, this is the, this is the trash thing. So propane tank was going this way, it's been turned to go this way in the baluster in front of that.
So you're just turning it ninety degrees, staying the same footprint, just turning it ninety degrees?
Turned it ninety degrees, um, and, um, you know, I, I don't think that that's a problem for anyone, except that it certainly was a problem for me when I came back and saw that the footprint for the concrete pad was placed incorrectly.
The only thing I would say would be, we do, uh, when you're turning it that way, you're, you're putting it closer to that parking spot right there, you may wanna put some bollards.
Oh, he does, he has.
No, no, on the, there's a, it, the bollards on one side, but then there's a, if you turn.
On the other, or that way?
Yeah.
Trash, trash can is there.
No, 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 no.
Trash, trash is there.
What is, there's, where's that, that number one?
Number one.
Where this wheel stop? Why is that wheel stop there? What is that for?
Stopped him going over the hill.
So that's, that's a parking spot.
Is that a parking spot?
That's a parking spot.
So I would.
Putting the ballons here.
Go around the corner there, put one or two around that corner.
To protect somebody driving in, if they come in and turn, they'll hit the tank.
Cause you're not.
Well, well, there's a, there's a cement slab right here that's up about six inch, six or eight inches that this sits on.
You still have to have them. You've got an exposed parking lot here, so these ballons should come down and then turn and come down the length of this one right here, but two more in here.
We could, we could. I think if you physically saw it, you, you might think that's impossible to do, but I suppose you never know what anybody can do.
Have you witnessed driving lately on the road?
You had somebody drive into a cemetery in Northampton.
Amongst other things.
The only thing I will tell you is that Cumberland Farms got hit for thirty million dollars for not having bollards in front of their stores, so putting one or two more maybe. Way to go.
Okay. That's why he's the guy who got the degree.
I, I just.
Keeps striking court cases.
And Ken, I will say this.
I wasn't gonna say that.
I'm not trying to make more just for the sake of more, and, and maybe you can have just one that sort of protects it, I, I'd have to see the configuration.
One or two, yeah.
But it's, you know, I don't want someone to come into that parking spot and be able to turn into where that propane is, is, is what I would say. Okay, I mean, I.
It is, it is a proper proportion, I can do it, and I will do it. It is properly proportioned, and there is a, a six inch high concrete thing around it, and there is this balance, but, yeah. If you think it's necessary, we can do that. That's fine, I'm more concerned right here.
My truck will climb a six inch curb, but it wasn't even there.
Yeah, which.
I'm not the only one who has a truck.
No, and like I said, it may be just one, it may be just one at the end of where that propane is.
Check with, check with the fire department what the code is on that. How far apart they have to be.
But because you're moving that propane tank decently close to where that parking spot is, it's not gonna take much of a turn to go into that. So I would be putting one, at least one, if not more, on that other side to protect that.
Looking at, if that's ten feet, you're, you're looking at at least a ten foot opening there.
Again, I mean, we do have to protect safety, but this is also your liability that.
No, you put, you put two ballons right there, and I think you'd be good.
Yes, we wanna protect.
Done.
All right, is there a third thing or not a third?
Well, there, there's not a third change that I'm, I'm showing, however, there was discussion brought up by, I guess, the, um, the DPW regarding pervious material used in the parking lot. That pervious material was ordered by, if it wasn't you, Conservation. And it, and I, and this is, in the H draft, it's there, and I can show you, um, the signed copy, this is a signed copy from Conservation. This was, it was approved on March sixth of twenty-three. They wanted this pervious material there so that, um, it had to do with stormwater and things like that. They wanted to make sure that this new area that I had opened up that used to be a hill with, with, um, with bushes on it and everything else, that because I eliminate, because I eliminated it, that it was going to absorb the additional water that was gonna reach the ground or something like that. I don't know how to properly explain it, but they said, we'd like it to have a, a pervious, um, area. I didn't know what that was, but I said yes. And when Crestview came in and they put down all the millings everywhere else, they put down a pervious material over here, which just allows more water to go through so that it, so that it won't overflow, whatever.
Issue from DPW? You know?
She, yes, um. Shouldn't have been an issue.
The question was raised, right, so to be, to address.
It's on the final plan of the Conservation.
That's right, so, so people, the notation of pervious material to be used in those spaces was part of, uh, Conservation closed it up, uh, wasn't shown on our plan, so DPW looked at, if you're the two, and just did a comparison of what's different from a global sense. So you will see there's some plantings, uh, shown, uh, in key areas that relate to Conservation. Um, and the question of what is this pervious material, uh, came up, cause it was news, I think, to, to DPW.
From reconciling the two plans?
Uh, in a way, yes, uh.
Did we specify on ours?
What the material is?
Yeah.
Well, that's a good question, to be direct, if you look at G, I'm sorry, is that, uh, G, have it right there? I don't know if it was in person, it's saying gravel paving.
Uh, on G, it doesn't say anything.
Sort of being the.
Oh, so, no, in our decision, we don't go so far as to say what.
It just says, does it say pervious? Or impervious, or?
I don't recall it says.
Hard surface, what do we follow?
It didn't say impervious, I can't, I know we didn't say that.
We didn't say impervious.
Look it up and just go and say, oh, just until we, just until we have that answer.
I mean, it sounds like it's just a question of reconciling, reconciling.
Well, they saw two different plans, yeah.
In, in the public's works.
Pervious is better.
In the nifty's world.
It's gonna intercept some of the water and get it.
There are many different ways to, for a service to be.
Sure.
A road from a, from just a gravel surface to one that's engineered.
And it's not any.
I don't see anything on, on G that even referred to what the material was supposed to be. I think we always knew that I was gonna be putting millings down. And then in that conversation, it came up that, oh, you know, we gotta have.
You have a combination there, right, you have some paved and you have some.
The previous, the previous part that was paved is still paved. And then the, everything else in the parking lot is, is brown millings, which is, which is hardening up pretty nicely. And then you've got this pervious, which I'm, I understand is just a lesser amount of, um, millings, mixed in with some other granular kind of stuff that makes it so that it won't hard pack as much. That's the layman way of what I've been told it. So won't hard pack so much that it'll, it'll take moist, uh, water through it.
I mean, I, I don't, I guess my initial reaction is I don't really care with what, if Conservation wants that, then I'd say that's fine. I just wanna make sure there's nothing in our opinion that just. You tweeted somebody, I don't count for that. I don't think there is, but I.
A month ago, I also went to the Conservation Board, before the Conservation Board, and approved the addition of eight feet. This was not on our, our original plans. When Leveque did the plans, they only had this concrete wall. Uh, it's on the other side. I've got it here, I have it here. Look at, look at that again. Looking over here, see the concrete wall the way it used to be? That part over there in red?
Yeah.
Was added after it was completely done because there was a big gap there.
Oh, well, we talked about that here.
Yeah, we talked.
Yeah, we talked, we did, okay, and then, and then we put that wall up as well.
We agreed on all that.
Yeah, we agreed on all of that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'm talking about the difference from G, you know, you.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
From G to H, you know, people were talking changes, well.
No, but this is, I mean, we already talked about that, that's already been approved, and I appreciate you mentioning it, but.
Okay, the, uh, the last name that came up, and John, I, I had never seen what you sent me at six thirty this evening.
Please go right ahead.
Okay, um, going back to the same original area that we were talking about outside the road, where those four new spots are gonna go, it, it was understood from the very beginning that the, the original island, if you will, was here, and that I'm cutting into that island, making myself closer to Congamon Road. And it says on the plan to replace the curving kind. So we've always been of the, not we, uh, Leveque Associates, definition of in kind means to replace it with what's already there. And what is already there is black tar curving. Crestview kept asking, what is, what did the town want, what are we supposed to put there? Little did I know, he knew something that I didn't know, but he made sure that I bring it up in this, in this meeting. John, this evening, sent me over an email that I had never seen, that came from the state of Massachusetts DOT, having no problem with the Leveque plans. However, it states that they want a concrete.
Granite, I believe.
Granite.
Thank you, a granite curving there. That answers the question, and I had that question to you, that was, you know, I'm like, I need an answer. Who's gonna tell me what in kind means? Doesn't matter what in kind means anymore, cause the DOT is saying, we want, and I, and I have that letter, we want it to be, uh, granite, so that's, that we're not.
We want it DOT yet.
Yeah, and, you know.
Because what do they, I mean, what do they have along the edge of the pavement? They have a granite?
No, they don't.
They don't?
No.
I think that's the new standard, cause I've seen what they're doing.
They have, if you look here.
They did the town, the main road through Southampton, hit it in granite.
Well, there's something in here.
Look at Congamon Road where they put the sidewalk in and where they adjusted it, it looks, right, isn't it?
I think that's the new way of doing it.
Congamon Road, Congamon Road curving from here all the way down to here is tar. The curving right here, well, from here, this, it goes, it is granite right here. This circular thing right here is granite, but from here over is tar, and from here over is tar. And I believe, I'm not touching this out here, that's, can't be on me to do that. I'm touching right here where I'm making it and I'm changing it, and I will put, um, granite in there. But on a Congamon roadside, that's not.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you comply with that letter from October fifth, we're good.
Yeah, I was quite surprised when I saw it, I finished.
If I can, well, just speak for a moment. There was a discussion that was initiated internal to the town, um, back when there was debate over who had jurisdiction over Congamon Road. This.
It's likely to recall that.
Just, some, some members may recall more detail, uh, but anyways, the fruit of that discussion wound up being, uh, the town. They're still doing Ken's coordination in terms of what can be done. Uh, there's, there's a, an agreement between the town and Mass DOT related to the source of funding for the Congamon Road project. And that gives them review privileges even though this specific area is not within their right of way. So anyhow, this comes up, and as Ken asked the question today, I go thumb through readings of, um, emails, and to the best of my ability, I wasn't able to see that Ken was ever copied on, on the exchanges. So I'm glad we see this map before something's installed and has to be torn out, but.
Yeah, that would have upset me, but I mean, I, I wanna be proactive in all of this, I don't want any more surprises, oh, you did that wrong type of thing. That's what I've had.
And I've had a lot of that.
He's had his discussion now.
Yeah. But somewhere, somewhere John at Crestview must have gotten an earful or something. And he kept asking me to be sure, you know, he was, he was on top of this somehow.
Okay. Um. Is that it?
From my end, I think that I've covered it all. If there's something that you think that I've missed, John, or?
No, I think those were really all the, uh, we just wanted to make sure we talked about all the changes out there. Um, yeah, with the, on the topic of the pervious, um, material, it's my coarse understanding that Conservation didn't look for an engineered solution. Uh, but that has yet to be confirmed and circle back with Randy to make sure he's comfortable with that. So if, if the board's inclined to accept.
In the end, we're going to get an as-built plan.
That's correct.
Do we want this pervious area to be shown on that as-built plan?
It should be, please. But we deferred, uh, deferred and DPW as far as the specifics of what goes there. But it's from a planning board standpoint, I don't have any issues with it.
How does DPW have anything to do with, um, the parking lot? They want to just better understand what materials were being shown there.
They sort of, yeah, have, I mean.
Well, they're doing the stormwater now. They, they handle.
I would say, uh, they don't, they're not the ones with the say, but both us and Conservation typically look to them for material decisions and recommendations. And so I would kind of defer to.
Well, I mean, it's, it's done. I think we just need some acknowledgement to DPW on that last item.
Right.
Yeah, I tried to reach out to Sabrina. Five o'clock today without any luck.
All right.
I can pick up the discussion tomorrow morning.
You know where she sits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right. Any, um, so we're all set. Anything else on the board?
One last little thought popped into my head is, we're talking about the four spots, right? They're going to reduce to length of 16 feet and we're talking about marking this compact or whatever. So it makes sense to narrow them to nine feet to discourage.
Cause they are nine.
Are they nine, they're nine feet?
They, they should be nine by, yeah.
Nine by 16? Cause they, I assume they were 10 by 20 before?
Uh, they were, they were.
I didn't know if you were just shortening them with that.
Nope. Nine by 16, yep.
Okay.
You could park your car in there.
Well, if they're 10 feet wide, then I'd be, I'd like it because I don't want to have a door ding. I'm very anti-door ding.
Now, they're annoying. Not that I'm, not that I'm inviting many motorcycles, but that is also the area that we would probably direct them.
All right.
Sure. Just, you know, cause I can't pack cars, but I can't, you know.
What I have, and tell me if there's anything else or you disagree with any of it, is um, no problem with the minor modifications. Obviously, they've shown on the as-built, um, like it's submitted, um, I, the sort of additions, I guess, that we discussed were to um, identify those as being con, compact cars only, um, the four spots to, um, add, um, additional bollard or bollards on the south side of the propane tank by the parking spot. Um, and then the issue with the pervious surface will, will get resolved through Conservation and DPW.
If, I'll, uh, crush you a definition of what they put down. If, if I can add just one layer of information, and this is out of respect for, to Randy who did provide some comments. We've really addressed, uh, his concerns. He mentions in regard to the pervious material area, um, looking for a long-term maintenance plan specific to that area. I think the root of that request comes from a concern that that's supposed to be an engineered solution. Um, we've talked about, you provide pervous surface and you have a reservoir, so it's a gravel to help receive that water and infiltrate it. Um, again, if that's the scenario, then I think Randy's, you know, comment is, uh, is, is accurate. Um, if it's simply intended to say, we don't want this to be impervialal and that's the alternative, um, subject to Sabrina's suggestion, then I think we're, we probably have adequate information as it says.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, from my standpoint right now, from a planning board, I would just defer to DPW and Conservation and let them figure that out. And assuming that they're okay with it, I don't care. So, okay. Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to give you this back before I steal it.
So am I waiting on anything or can I proceed to start working on that parking area on the Congamon Road?
You can. On the, uh, the smaller spots, you mean?
Right here.
Or the, the granite?
The granite parking, the small, in all seven of these parking places?
That's fine, yeah.
Ken, may I retain, uh, that's not it. Uh, we have a full-size version of H copy for the files.
I do, but you can print one?
I do not have, uh.
That's not within our budget.
Yes. I, I can scan, but I cannot print.
No, I will just call Levec tomorrow.
Isn't that him deliver one?
No, no.
This is supposed to be the contractor that's gone out. I can, I can pick another one up. Or actually, contractor, I can just, I've already emailed him. He's probably printing one out. Trust me, they can print one out all the time. I just don't, now I don't have one of my own.
How we doing there, Mr. Chair? Oh, there's no time, no time for it on this stuff. John, you gotta put time zones on these, like discussion items.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid to. Funny, Ken and I were having a discussion about that earlier, earlier, earlier last week.
Yeah.
You know, I will say, speaking of Crestview, that given that it's now 8:45. Brian the Duke last night said to me that it's going to be a short meeting. It looks like it's going to be a short meeting. He jinxed us. So if you have any problems down here this late, you can go talk to Ben.
Yeah, right.
It's on him. It's on him.
Always on you.
Has somebody complained that 8:45 was long for us?
Exactly, I'm just kidding.
This is early right now.
8:45.
Making progress. I'm not too getting beat up. I gotta go to CRC with them. They're waiting for me. Oh.
Enjoy.
We look for public input.
See you, Ken.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Take care.
All right. Greens of Southwick.
The Greens of Southwick, West subdivision.
You pull up your email. It's longer than mine.
We got lots of good papers on that.
Oh. You can go through it since you probably have it in your head a little bit better than I do.
Okay, sure. So as we sit right now, this is the Greens West subdivision that is currently, um, vote based, it's a, it's on the town meeting warrant, um, for treat acceptance. Uh, the planning board still holds $30,000, um, security for infrastructure improvements. Uh, that was kind of a holdover as a goodwill gesture as they closed out the lots from the covenant in Louisville, Bubba. Uh, at this point in time, they're looking to get the maintenance in place. And so it's appropriate time for the planning board to look at issuing a certificate of completion for the project and release the $30,000 that are currently being held. And then the $70,000 maintenance bond comes into place. Uh, that runs for a period of one year from the date of, of the vote of acceptance. I should say, the date it is accepted, um, at town meeting. Uh, so the idea is that this needs to be in place for that event. Uh, that's why we have the release, uh, which is in conjunction with certificate of completion, uh, before you, uh, this evening, and a draft bond and agreement for you. There's a few dates on that agreement form for the maintenance bond that, uh, well, that would presumably today if the board is inclined to issue that certificate of completion. Um, so, uh, if the board chooses to move forward, uh, I think our intention would to be to issue these contingent upon receipt of the original wedding bond.
Yeah.
Agreement. Uh, so that can be provided to the town clerk before, um, the releases. Provided for recording.
Yeah, you basically escrow. You'd hold it until you get.
Yes.
That it. All right. Um. So should be, well, first I guess start with Randy's letter and then I'm just so you have, actually no, that's, that's just.
I may have put the wrong attachment. I don't think I catch the, uh, excuse me, the maintenance bond. I grabbed Randy's file instead. My apologies.
That's okay. So, um. All right. So we have a certificate of completion and release of a performance uh, guarantee, which is the 30, yeah, um, okay.
I have one question. On page three, what does Franklin SS mean?
It's the wrong county. That means Franklin County. But that's fine. Uh, it's, that means, um, what does it mean?
So it should be Hampton SS?
Yes. Should be SS. I don't know what that means, but it is on everything that I sign all the time, so.
Significant, right?
Um.
Yeah. I'm going to blame that on town council.
Absolutely. Um.
It's not here.
And so any questions about the certificate of completion and release of performance guarantee? And this has been approved by town council?
That's correct. Inclusive of Franklin.
He missed Handing County? Uh-oh, we better dock him.
All right. So um. Do I hear a motion to execute the certificate of completion and release of performance guarantee to be held in escrow until, by the town planner, until such time as we really, we receive a signed maintenance bond for $70,000?
Marcus Phelps, don't move.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
I assume we're doing the same thing where I just have it notarized for me? We all sign it and I have it notarized for me?
Yes, I worked well.
Okay.
I, I feel these are all double-sided, so I need to.
So I don't have to drive to Greenfield to change it to him. Okay.
Mike, a key.
Um. We then have a maintenance bond, um. And anybody have any questions or comments on the maintenance bond?
A few spots where I will, where I have provided information for them to enter, specific to the subdivision. Impressive. And then this is provided alongside the bond to the, uh, town treasurer.
Okay. Any questions, comments, anything? All right, um, and obviously. All right, so John, what have you, you, you gave them the subdivision plan name, right, entitled The Greens of Southwick West.
And the relevant date of those plans.
And the date, which was last revised July 30th, 2018. Those two things will be filled in up here. Um, all right. Do I hear a motion to accept the maintenance bond once it is executed in its form? Um, for $70,000?
Marcus Phelps, don't move.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael's already aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
Dave's been aye. Okay. Um, so when you get a chance, you want to just go print that out, we'll sign it because they are on the same page, right? So you have to make that.
Yeah.
The signature is where that is. Um, so do that and, um, we'll get that signed. Um. Yeah, you want, actually, you want to do that now while we do a master plan advisory committee update or do you want to take notes on that?
Uh, no, but I suppose I'll start off that update.
Oh, fair enough. We can do it out, you can print it out after.
Margaret, you want to go first or me go first?
Uh. Just a couple of things.
I'll let you go with business and I'll.
The planning board is invited to a, uh, master plan advisory committee, a meeting on May 4th for a briefing from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on the, uh, current status of the master plan. Uh, we're in a process of planning some more community outreach coming up probably in June. There will be a table at the town meeting like we did last year. Uh, information table for people coming in, update them on the master plan. And, uh, whatever else you have, John.
I just wanted to add that, uh, the master plan advisor committee made a motion uh, to recommend to the planning board to consider making him a lasting member onto the conclusion of the Does that seem indefinite, Marcus?
Off of the, uh, till death do you part.
Of the conclusion of the master plan advisor committee's duration.
Okay. Um, yeah, we'll take, why don't you throw that on the agenda for next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll take it up at the next meeting. So it'll be taken care of before the election. Um. All right. Anything else from the master plan advisory committee?
No, sir.
Okay. Um. Got to sign that. Zone change.
Uh, that action item is going to persist until the next meeting.
Fantastic.
We will compose it. We will distribute it for review.
Okay. And minutes approval. Everybody take a look at the March 7th minutes.
I did make some.
Sorry, Mark.
Cleanups to the, uh, town planning report as well as the, uh, discussion specific to the Hudson uh, drive solar, uh, facility to be in line with our discussions today.
Do I hear a motion to approve the March 7th, 2023 minutes?
Marcus Phelps, don't move.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. March 28th. Comments, questions? Everybody good with those? Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, make a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2023.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. Okay. Mr. Sutton.
Take a motion closing meeting.
Dave's been a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.